Now called City Council Special Meeting to Work. To raise the indication and why to believe it's.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please have a roll call.
I'm going to bring to you Councilmember Johnson here, Councilmember Southern.
Here.
Mary Bernard.
Here.
Mary Kristen.
Here. All right. Is, uh, Melody going to be?
She's on do.
Melody take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to participate virtually this evening. Um, we've had a little episode of COVID here, so. Um, the purpose of this evening's meeting is to discuss the infrastructure funds and the CRA funds. I can't see the, the slide presentation, but if you go to slide number two. Where it shows the infrastructure fund revenues.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so y'all can see that?
Yes, yes.
So for the purpose of the revenues as they're presenting today for the infrastructure fund. We are looking at revenue coming in of nine hundred seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is a decrease from last year of one hundred and twenty-one, I'm sorry, one hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Um, we, as you may or may not be aware, we enter into a, uh, inter-local agreement with Highlands County. Um, and it's based on the local option gas taxes that are collected. Um, this year our, um, percentage declined due to the fact that we have, um, our 2020 audit has not yet been submitted. It's potentially going to cost us, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually over the next five years.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
You're saying because of the, then due to audit property, the next five years it costs us a hundred thousand dollars a year?
So not that the audit wasn't done correctly, the audit has not been submitted to the state of Florida. And the county, every five years, the inter-local agreement is, um, um, redone. And this year they would base it on the, the last five years, so we're missing one year. Um, in the calculation that they did for the percentage. So yes, sir, it's going to be approximately a hundred and fifty thousand for the next five years.
Thanks, I understand. Would it not be possible to do a one-year inter-local agreement or simply free up it?
Um, I would, it'd be something that we would have to contact Highlands County and, you know, maybe they'll work with us once we get our audit submitted. You know, maybe they will, um, redo the inter-local agreement. We'd have to check with them.
Do you know if that's the purview of the commissioners or if that's a state statute?
That's the commissioners.
Okay, I'm sure they will be amiable.
I'm hoping they will.
Whether they know it yet or not?
Exactly. I have a question. So if you say the state would cost us, does this mean that we were going to lose a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the next five years in revenue, despite of us paying? Now, when you say cost, maybe I'm going to go with something I have to pay.
So if I.
Yeah, so just money that's not going to be going into the account.
Got you, okay. Okay.
Lose the revenue.
Melody, this is the one we just had on the last agenda. The intro, that we covered then, remember that?
That's correct.
Okay, any other questions on slide number two?
Okay, David, if you go to the next slide. So this is to show you, the next slide will show you our projected balance, um, for, uh, the end of fiscal year 2022. Um, it seems how we don't have the audit. The beginning balance, um, is a little hard to project, so please understand that these numbers are just estimates. Um, so the projected balance at the end of 21 is going to be approximately five point six million dollars, with revenues coming in at about nine hundred and seventy-three thousand and estimated expenses at one point one million for the year, which would leave us a unreserved balance at the end of 2022 of five point four million. So we have plenty of funding and reserves. The slides are going to show you, um, what staff has requested to be spent out of those funds.
Uh, just one question on the, uh, City Hall roof. Is that, uh, just for a roof or is there more in that?
I think, Mark, I think that may be a question for you. We've got money in there. If you see, um, this year, we're going to redo the, the windows, um, on the second floor, but in talking with Mark, we believe that the hundred thousand will cover more than just the windows on the second floor. Um, so I believe, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but we'll be doing potentially all of the windows at City Hall?
No, but I'll cover that, but I didn't hear what you asked.
Yeah, I was asking about the roof. So in the year 2022, you've got City Hall number there, a hundred thousand. I was just curious if that was just a ballpark guess of what an actual roof would cost or if there's other things in that, like the insulation package or?
No, that's just a ballpark to have it in there because we've had problems with the ends. It's going to have to be.
Okay.
And to, to cover what, um, Melody was saying, the, the 2021, as you know, we had the money in there for the second story window. We went out to our feet twice. One time we got one, you rightly so, turned it down. It was eighty-two thousand. People there that they put in, that called me and asked me what, what, um, uh, floor we were even talking about. We went out again, got no bids, but we just went out last week again on it. And the other twenty-five, actually Councilmember Southern's on here. She was, when she was helping, um, Mike Stone, making the front of the, um, uh, City Hall hook cutter, which had, they put plants in and they, if anybody had seen it, seemed to look a bit, we'll get it demolished probably tomorrow. Um, she went around with Mike and saw the windows and whoever did the first store, um, floor windows probably didn't know the way they should have done it. And look at it, like, you know, it needs to be structured to see it. So we're going to get some, um, quotes for that and see if we can get those done. So that'd probably take the other point, but, but to answer your question, yes, this is for the roof and it's ballpark at this point.
All right.
Okay, next slide. The next slide will be your police infrastructure, um, fund, the projected balance. Oh, I don't think, I think we use that every year. I apologize for that. Um. I'm going to have to look, but this year we put it.
According to the, um, since 2012, when the, the city went with the sheriff's office for their law enforcement, thirty thousand dollars a year. That's where it came out, this hundred sixty-eight, eight thirty is the figure the sheriff's office gave us for the upcoming agreement, which, um, I just received, went through it, got back to the city attorney, or the, uh, sheriff's office attorney on some things and I gave to Jerry. Jerry looked at it over the weekend. He and I are going to talk about it in a month or two. But that's, that money's for vehicles they're asking for for this coming fiscal year agreement. Well, that's basically, they're asking for a four hundred and fifty thousand percent increase or four hundred fifty percent increase of vehicles. Went, uh, almost nine, ten years, thirty thousand, now they want it to one sixty-five. Seems a little bit extreme to me, but I know we can talk about that some more when it comes to the contracts and all. That's a huge increase, four hundred fifty percent. We'll probably come back next year too.
Does that simple explanation correct there, Melody, that, uh, they're basically just going thirty thousand to one sixty-five?
Yeah, so the thirty thousand was for one vehicle, I believe, for the contract per year. This year, of course, we, you know, in the negotiations, we are, um, I believe it's for vehicles that they're going to purchase, Mark. I'm, I can't remember off the top of my head. Um, so that number will go up. That's the number based on the number of vehicles they want to purchase this year.
I see. Obviously, we don't have an actual agreement yet, so it's all sort of. Finance guy just went through.
Moving targets.
Number six.
Okay, slide number six is the fire department. Um, and there's an item in here for the brush truck that is incorrect. That number should actually be, for the year 2022, that should be added, um, to the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 23. I'm not sure if Chief Marcy's there to discuss the items that are on here.
He is.
Yep, I'm here. That number, so the dollar amount is also incorrect. I don't know if we just got switched, but it, uh, we, so we put the brush truck in a couple of years before the capital improvement. For roughly a hundred seventy-five now. At that point, it's sort of, yes, three years or, we're, we've gotten closer and we think that's more like two-four. So I asked her to add forty thousand to that one seventy-five, but I think she just, you know, clearly did it there, but forty-seven, one seven.
And, and it shouldn't be in, in here. It's for the following fiscal year, 22, 23. It's our NCIP, so you can just take that right off here. Okay, that'll be one thirteen as well. Chief Moon, so you're seeing that, isn't it? That'd be that, Fire Chief Command vehicle.
Sure. So currently I've got a, it's a nine-year-old, uh, start that police car. It's, it will discuss the problems, but the idea is to explain to Peter, this is a response vehicle that drives to accidents, fires. So the plan is just getting better with better visible vehicles will be the problem. Only seems one seven.
Okay.
So sixty-two is a high number, but it's in the future. Plan better, this is a bigger business, but I'm not going to do that, but she has to.
And we'll try and, you know, kind of go through the room. Right. And to add to that, just now, a vehicle to drive to and from, like he currently has, this would be set up, actually the command vehicle, so on the big incident. You may have seen him on TV or if you've been in a big city where usually a tow truck, it's a suburb that pulls up and they can pull out the back and act as a command post, so. All right, Tom's going to go through me. I'm driving home, so give it some.
Well, well, that's important, everybody.
But I, just making a point, really isn't just another vehicle. The one he has currently really isn't a command vehicle. It's two, um, um.
Yeah.
What's happening with that vehicle? Yeah, the one that you have now, chief?
We, we will use it. Um, we don't have enough vehicles now for people to, the one I was supposed to be driving, I gave to Rick Whalen. And it's fine. I just haven't driven a P O D, but we don't have enough vehicles now, so that would be. That or another vehicle would be used for city staff run around because right now to, to make the, the bank drops, they have to borrow a, um, code enforcement vehicle, which has, uh, probably next week will be, uh, the new code enforcement would be used. But we don't have enough vehicles. It will be utilized and still add some, um, years or miles up and it'll be retired the later.
What happened to the, um, the, um, that hundred vehicle that we had?
The lease? That little lease star?
Yes.
The lease was traded in for it at one fifty.
Hey, that was what, two years ago?
Yeah, two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah.
So City Hall has no vehicles now?
No.
It's command post vehicle. You say it would act, it would be like an S U V or something like that?
Yeah, right now it's, it's spec as a truck, which is a little more than S U V. I just kind of played it and picked out what was really good. You know, this would be a good number, reasonable number that can work. S U V, I think, is a little cheaper, but this is the budget right now, so whatever number you give me, I'll work off of that.
Okay, obviously, we'll be approving the actual purchase order whenever that comes along, right? Yes. Okay, the roof replacement and the stuff of repair, the, uh, the roof replacement is on the, the main roof there or?
Yeah, that's on the bay where we park the fire trucks. That's still in that brand that we're working on and we're getting closer and closer every day to that brand. It's going to be here now, we're still working on it.
Right.
Um, we're getting now to where the testing stuff will be complete. And one of the papers that they sent had a start date projected of September two thousand point one. So I feel like we're getting close to something active starting, but that's still in the bracket, so we won't, it won't technically become a, it's fine. But we're leaving it there because we technically have a, we have a intent to award it or we don't have an award.
Got it.
Yeah. Well, again, that's in this year's budget, so unless we need to carry it over, it won't be carried over, just saying.
The, uh, fire hydrant replacement, you got forty-five grand there. Um, I'm similar to forty-one fire hydrant.
Yes, each, each fire hydrant, they're saying is around five thousand replaced.
I see.
We actually annexed a bunch of stuff on twenty-seven that we don't have sufficient paper coverage for. So that's kind of what these next couple of years, this year we're trying to get some done. I think they don't have enough manpower to really do that. But they're trying to spend some of that forty-five thousand at the end of the year. And I know that's forty-five thousand is next year to try to do a bunch more. But we have some properties that when we, if we have to connect to a hydrant, it will go completely across front of road on some lakes and also completely across highway points, which is not.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions on slide six?
Okay, slide seven is, uh, your streets department. Basically, these are rolled, um, continuously year after year. Street improvements, three hundred thousand, sidewalks and curbs, a hundred thousand, in stormwater and drainage, a hundred thousand.
Do we have a priority list for twenty twenty-two street improvement, uh, listing for the three hundred thousand?
No.
Not, not yet. Will one be developed?
Yeah.
Just picking choose.
No, we'll do the same as we did this year. We'll come to you with a list of the ones that, um, David Roberts believes are the ones that need it the most.
I actually think that maybe we could increase that for next year because our streets are continuing, you know, deteriorating. And if we're just going to do a half a dozen a year, we're never going to get caught up, so I think we ought to add something to that.
That, that's a good point I was going to ask if you may want to, but the, now whether E P I can keep up with the work we're given, but again, if we don't use it, it goes, stays in the bug.
Well, that and, and the stormwater drainage problem too. And also, I think one of the things that could help us out is we know that there is some type of infrastructure bill being passed up there in Congress that maybe some of that money will eventually come down to, uh, our city because, uh, they usually look at, uh, smaller cities sometimes that need the help instead of a bigger city. So maybe we could get some help there, but I think we definitely need to add some money to, I would go with the streets and, and the stormwater drains and my, my opinion on sidewalks, go ahead, but I'd like to see at least fifty thousand out of each one of those.
I guess the question would be, uh, obviously, you know, for budgeting, it's not particularly important that we have a particular project in mind. I would just have two questions. Number one, what does the city actually need? You know, do we have a list of all the streets? Is that sort of, uh, I know that at one time, uh, you know, police officers were giving the, uh, streets department tips on, hey, this road might need some work, et cetera, et cetera. And they had kind of a rolling list. With all the turnover that we've had over the recent years, I would highly doubt that list exists or is accurate. So perhaps that might be a, a better way to go is to actually get kind of an inventory of, a rough idea of what we need. I mean, it could be fifty thousand, it could be five million. Yeah. And i- if it is a lot higher number, it might be more beneficial for us to inflate this number for the sake of getting grants. I know that if it's not in your capital improvement plan, a lot of times you're not going to get awarded, so we might want to, like you're saying, be more aggressive. I would just simply say, is that all that crap to say? Maybe we should do more than fifty thousand.
Well, I, I agree with you. I was just wanting to, we need something and I think that, I believe that there were some streets on the list this year we didn't get to. So we know there's some out there that need to be worked on soon.
Yeah.
And we know there's, there has to be more, so I, I'm wanting to go with whatever the rest of the council wants to go with as far as, uh, additions to those amounts.
Before we put a specific amount, there's two things that I would like to see. And the first thing is that, that a percentage be spent on the south side of town. Because I do know that there are, there were streets that on the south side that did not get done, uh, that really, really, that's a need and dire. And I know that the, uh, the gentleman that does the evaluation is doing his best, as you explained that to me before. But to be on fairness to all of our citizens and everyone in part, I do think that would be a more reasonable way of, of spreading the funds out. And I know, I agree with you too, Jim, there should be more in, in the, um, in this budget. Okay, my second thought is that the, uh, there was some, uh, grant that the, um, finance director and told us about last year that, I mean, that at last meeting, that we could be getting, uh, and we didn't ask for that grant. Could some of that funds be used for this project?
You talking about American Rescue Plan?
Yeah, that's, that's what she's talking about. Melody?
Um, I, right now, um, I believe that the big thing that they're pushing for is water and wastewater infrastructure. I'm not sure if streets are, um, in there. I'm in the process of creating a document that's detailing, um, more of the things that they're allowing and hopefully I'll have that to present to you guys at the next council meeting. Um, so we have a little more, uh, information, but that's a, they're constantly updating that. And I don't, I'm not sure if streets are in there. Councilmember Gray, I'll have to get back with you on that.
The deadline for all of the submittals for that is next month and typically most engineers are already working on that. And yes, it is, um, infrastructure, not necessarily hardscape. But one thing for sure is a couple of years ago, we talked about stormwater assessments and that is something that everyone is affected by in terms of stormwater. And it might behoove us to look into an assessment in the future to help offset some of these drainage problems, which cause the problems on the roads themselves. But in terms of the ARP, the American Rescue Plan, there's a hundred and forty million in there. And right now, anyone that has a, um, shovel-ready project is eligible to go ahead and submit. But otherwise, if Corbett is still working on our mitigation hardscape stuff or the grants that he was working on, then he should be aware of any funding for any street improvements. But I doubt, like, um, um, Ms. Sauerhoffer just said, I don't believe it's for actual streets. It's just for infrastructure, for sewers and old pipes being replaced and things like that.
Or if a street has to be ripped up and replaced to replace a pipe?
Probably.
What you need more? Okay. Obviously, staff should give him a call and, uh, flush this out sooner rather than later. Like, uh, Brenda was saying, with the, um, the streets that we have not gotten to in prior years, obviously makes a lot of sense to get to those first. And that'd be my first place to check for a priority list is what hasn't been accomplished already in the past several years. And as far as a number to add to this, do we have a suggestion? I would probably lean more towards adding another two hundred thousand to it.
Each one over the?
Yeah, for, for each year in the, uh, streets.
Yeah, I, I agree. That sounds more amazing. I agree.
And, and ma'am, let me ask a question. When we're talking about, and when we're talking about improving the streets and, and we're looking at twenty-one and twenty-two and twenty-three or twenty or nineteen or wherever it passed by, and we're putting this list together, are we always starting with the same one and going down and always missing? Because I don't ever see too many improvements on some of the streets and I know they're horrible on the south side, so.
Well, so.
Who's the person gathering these?
The reality is, you know, in order to redo a street, like we just did, redo the street over there, closed the back doors, right? And went from Main Street, just passed back.
Okay.
That project was a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
On one little piece of earth. So in order for you to actually have enough street getting done to notice, I mean, you're, you're talking about millions of dollars. So. What's right and what's wrong, I don't know, but I know that it needs a substantial amount in order to actually fix things. And, you know, some of the things may be able to be refinished with resurfacing a road rather than actually grinding it down or doing, which is cheaper, but it's still extraordinarily expensive, particularly right now with all the contractors have more work than they want. Price of materials is, most of the time, they'll work.
Mark, if, if I can interject, um, a couple of months ago, we talked about that little road that the garbage trucks use between Pine and Main Street that is, um, just on the block to the east of City Hall. And you all were going to get back with us on ownership of that. And I don't know if there's a right of way or anything back there, but that dirt road just gets all ucky and mucky and I don't know if we're going to keep driving on it. Are we going to end up being responsible for it with our garbage trucks?
It's private property.
Then if it's private property, should we be driving on it?
No.
That means that they would have to bring the garbage chains out further to, so to our streets?
Then bring out the front, yes.
So I, I don't think we need a motion to adjust these numbers.
So just what you wanted, five hundred foot in streets improvements in road, what, what else did you?
Uh, just for five hundred for each year, uh, here, here.
Five hundred each year for the street improvement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's actually now, so they take it.
So we want carried forward in the C I P for all five years? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
And Danielle's question on the stormwater and drainage?
And you said we could not use that, um, uh, the ARP grant of stormwater reject drainage, is that right?
Um, American Rescue Plan?
Yes.
Right.
So that is infrastructure for water and wastewater, I believe. I'd have to look in, I'd have to look and see. Um, stormwater may be included, but I believe it's water, wastewater and broadband. Are the three major things they're looking for.
Okay. I'm not supposed to, um, let's just do something to keep in mind whenever we come back, our actual writing checks and.
I'm having a little trouble hearing Councilmember Bernard, what was, add two hundred to storm?
I figured, I said that maybe we should go ahead and double the stormwater drainage for years to two hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Is anyone on the council opposed to that? Okay.
Any more questions, comments?
No. No, go ahead.
Okay, slide number eight. Is the community center, um, last year we didn't spend any money. I believe I'm going to throw this back at Mark. Um, he was talking about the roof. We may need to replace the clay roof.
Well, looking at me hard here. About two weeks ago, I was informed that there was a leak at the community center roof. And I said, wow, I've been here a half and I've never heard of that. Mike Stone said, there's been a leak since he's been here, been here how much longer?
Good, good, almost three years. Has, has any contractor been called to try to?
So I got ahold of, um, his boss. They went out there, went up on, got on lift, went up and looked at it, had a contractor, I think it was Stewart. He says, the whole roof needs to be replaced. Danielle told me that the west side was replaced, but when we looked in the west side. Yeah, that's the left side, west side, look at it, left. It wasn't replaced. It was just passed, going ten thousand. And anyways, the contractor said, you probably look at, again, ballpark around two hundred fifty thousand because he thinks that the barrel roof needs replacement, but, so, so it's just the number we put in there for now. Whether it's that much or not, not sure if that's what we need to, uh.
Okay. Well, that's definitely something that we need to examine pretty closely, I think, you know, there's a lot of other options out there than, than that. Maybe we should get some other contractors to take a look at it, give estimates. Do you have any idea how old that roof is?
No.
Probably the original roof that was put on the building.
But I definitely know we need to make sure we look at it, get something done, because we all have known the pop off we did with, uh, the brick building.
Other than, when we just sat out of it, all of a sudden we lost our leak at once, so.
Uh, community center, you know, trying to the city, so we need to get some other people looking.
All of a sudden, we lost our leak at once, so, uh, community center, you know, part of the city, so we can get some other people to look at.
Well, we'll have to put it up for a bit.
Yeah, no, the question is, you know, you have to put out, that, that's kind of where you probably need some assistance. Okay.
Yeah, so the next few slides are going to, um, pertain to the C R A, um, as you are aware, the C R A is, um, fully associated with the millage, um, and for the sake of this budget, the millage is based on a rate of two point two four. Um, I just put some information in here about each one of the, uh, C R A areas, and I'm sure you all know where they are, but, um, I was kind of familiarizing my own self with that. Um, for the end of twenty twenty-one, it's projected that we'll have five hundred and eighty-four thousand in the Main Street C R A. The estimated revenues are around two hundred and ninety-one thousand, um, we had a meeting with the advisory board um, regarding the budget, and I think they're looking at, uh, maybe taking the C R As in a, in a different direction, um, instead of just relying on people coming forward and, uh, you know, requesting facade grants, they may want to delve in a little bit deeper and see exactly what it can be used for.
You know, I, I agree with that, that, I mean, when you think about how much money we have left over every year, it seems like maybe either some homeowners aren't aware of it, or the financials not able to do it, or maybe even have other issues than other than just the facade. We have the money there, and we ought to try to utilize it to improve all the areas of, of the city, and so I like the idea that you sent the C R A and looked into that, and, uh, I, I agree with that, we need to find a way to, uh, to actually use the funds to improve the looks of the city, you know, on all areas, so, um, I said kudo for that.
And I think, um, we are going to probably rely heavily on our city attorney for the, what uses we can actually, uh, spend these funds on.
Okay, you will have a wealth of opinions, I'm sure.
Oh, yes, on the, um, south side, um, when I look at the, uh, the budget these years, that, where there was no point and, um, utilize for the south side, and I can almost imagine the reason why is that folks just don't have that additional funds to add with it in the home ownership level. Uh, as far as like the, um, uh, businesses, we pay a hundred percent of the businesses. Grants when they come in and ask for funds, uh, if we should, but when the south side, when the homeowners come in, and I can only speak of the south side, and they apply for a grant, or they consider applying for a grant, and then we tell them, well, we're going to pay fifteen hundred or two thousand dollar project that needs to be done, that shines them away. Even though the project still needs to be done, they just don't have the funds. So I, I, I think we, in, in the, in the process of them looking at other avenues, that would probably be one I would suggest that the C R A would look at.
They did change the application, homeowners are a hundred percent up to two thousand dollars. And then, um, starting October first, the homeowners will have up to a hundred percent up to three thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, but businesses get five thousand, yes, so I don't understand the difference. And I think it should be reconsidered to match the businesses.
If you, if you ask Jerry, you'll, you'll hear that the purpose of the C R A was for the business districts.
Excuse me?
If you ask Jerry here, then he'll come back and say that the purpose of the C R A is for the business districts.
But we use it for the M and A, it's not a glide throughout the area.
I don't get it.
And we can also make that adjustments, even though I know he says that, um, in a negative way, but nine times out of ten, when you're asking him, uh, can it be used for this? Then the answer is no, but then we'll come around and still find a way of doing it, so I just, that was just a suggestion and observation.
Sure, from our meeting, we had a, we had a good meeting the other night, and actually, what was on the agenda, it will be on your agenda a week from Monday when we have the C R A, that's my, I was going to bring it up, but I got an email, um, actually, it was, um, through Councilmember Sutherland and Casey Wall and, and Maria said they give Mark, get it in front of them, and where the, uh, the, uh, C R A advisory board, you know, they say, hey, what's we're doing isn't working, we got all this money, we're up and spending it, trying to make Avon Park a better place, and as I pointed out to them, all they're talking about basically is Main Street, you know, they sometimes get their all three of it. But with, um, Casey Wall Hart, we had her on here with Joe Lamp from Airstream Ventures, he was here once, that's who the, the county, um, brought in. But what they, that Spartan race, the tough motor that's going to be in Lake Placid, well, the day before is going to be our jingle run to five K, and the T D C is paying like ninety thousand dollars for the event, and they were asking the C R A if it's allowable, could, would, um, throw in seventy-five hundred for basically marketing, advertising in Avon Park to get people up here and, you know, certainly see Avon Park, and then that, um, jet ski race that they want to alternate, um, over the next few years, being Lake Jackson, Lake Piranha, they're looking, they had, actually CBS Sports TV coverage is going to be here, and out of everything they cover, they're going to have a thirty-minute show the next day, and, um, they were looking at ten thousand dollars to help pay for the TV coverage, and out of that, Avon Park gets sixty, ninety seconds showing what Avon Park's about and trying to bring in tourism, that's where all this started the other night, and actually, they had made a motion that they wanted the hundred thousand dollars put in line item for, if it's allowable, um, because I'm still confused sometimes what's allowable, what isn't, and sometimes, as we know, Jerry say isn't, it gets voted over anyways. But, um, they thought that was a great idea for that, and then in future, want to just bring people to Avon Park and advertise Avon Park, so that's where it all came from, or most of it came from, and they said, you know, we look out in the audience, there's nobody here for the facade grants, and we'd like to spend this money to try to put Avon Park basically on the mat and get some events up here and that, but we, we'll bring that to you in the next, um, C R A board meeting, okay?
Anything else for fourteen? Any questions on any of the C R As?
I think that brings us to the end, we have the airport C R A, um, but I'm not sure, um, what's going on with that based on the, the lease, um. So I'm not really sure where.
Any questions on the airport series? Any other questions, or anything else to bring up about the, uh, budget?
Not at this time.
So our next, uh, meeting that we're going to have, we had our next council meeting night on Monday, right?
Correct, four o'clock.
What are the, uh, the funds that'll be covered there, you know, yeah?
Water and waste.
Okay.
Melody, when did you, you were going to do water, wastewater, um, and then sanitation, did we get to that?
That'll be, I'm sorry, that'll all be included, hopefully I will get to all of that, um, at the next meeting.
Okay, any questions? Anything else to do with the city? Yes.
Yeah, you'll have a, um, a special meeting, then we had the C R As, and then right now, there's a lot for the regular meeting, so.
Okay.
Really, four o'clock, like meeting, then the C R A, then the city council.
Bring us back.
Bring lunch, is there, or something?
Okay.
Hey, Melody, how long do you think that the budget one will last?
Um, it depends on, you know, how deep we get into it. Um, I think that if we concentrate on, um, you know, some of the, not necessarily all of the minutia with each line item, but you know, if we concentrate on, um, capital expenditures and that kind of thing, we might push it along a little bit farther, quicker.
Anything else to do with city?
You know, enter the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
In your opposition, we are.